So, that's the Reader's Digest condensed version.
Anybody have any questions?
Just on the North High project, is that consistent with the facilities master plan?
Yes, it's following the footprint of that master plan. And we've designed the structure so that a second floor can be added at a later date without having to go back and retrofit the first floor structure. So, we're actually designing the roof as a second floor and then just putting a roof on it. So, all we have to do is strip the roofing off and come in and put the structure on at a later date to finish out that corner.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
And this is all fund issue money from '08 that was already budgeted for these projects.
That's correct.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you.
So, can I make a motion that we approve Agenda Items 10.18 through 10.21?
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, numbers 10.18 through 10.21, pass, carry, seven, zero. Now, the moment we've all been waiting for, 11.01, Program Evaluation ESOL. May I have Mrs. Nancy Ernest, Coordinator of Modern and Classical Language, come on down.
Oh, that's why. Anybody else having trouble with their Word docs?
Yeah, just reset your connection.
So, that's not Word docs.
We are so excited this evening to share the ESOL Program Evaluation, but before Nancy starts, we need to share a little journey. Nancy has been with us eight years. In 2004, December of 2004, she presented the last ESOL Program Evaluation. So, she has been here for a complete cycle. And there have been significant changes since that last Program Evaluation. She went from very little data in 2004, and what we did have was paper pencil surveys that had to be calculated by hand. Went from a much smaller enrollment in our ESOL programs to a very rich, diverse community that we have now that our program is able to serve. Went from very little technology to support the learning and the data collection and the Program evaluation, so all the way through it. But most excitingly is advancements in the instructional practices to help our students acquire the English language. And I know that you will hear significant changes as Nancy shares the journey of where our ESOL programs have been since 2004, the last time she presented a Program Evaluation. Nancy?
Good evening. I am not only the Coordinator of Modern and Classical Languages, but also for ESOL. And I just want to say good evening to Dr. Marty Carroll Calanda, President Feldman, and the Board. I'm happy to present to you tonight the Program Evaluation of Parkway's ESOL Program. I would like to mention that staying with us all night are a few very dedicated ESOL teachers in the room, and I'm very honored to work with them. Among the ESOL teachers, there are three nationally board-certified teachers and three Teachers of the Year. One of them is the current High School Teacher of the Year, Jill Mori. It is an outstanding staff, and they do amazing work. Before we begin, a little alphabet soup is in order. ESOL means English for Speakers of Other Languages, the name of the program and what the teachers teach. ELL is English Language Learner, the student. LEP is Limited English Proficiency Student, and that is the DESI terminology for data purposes. There is no such thing as a typical ELL. Like all Parkway students, ELLs come to us with a variety of linguistic, educational, and socioeconomic backgrounds. The goals of Parkway's ESOL Program is to provide a caring, non-threatening environment, develop students' linguistic knowledge, develop students' understanding of the culture of the United States, assist ELLs with learning and content areas, provide appropriate literacy support, mainstream ELLs gradually, and maintain and promote ELLs' native languages and cultures in school and community contexts. This Program Evaluation is organized into four parts: the past, the present, the data, and the future recommendations. Parkway's ESOL Program began formally in the mid-1980s. During the 1990s, the program continued to grow, and more ESOL centers opened. In 2001, with No Child Left Behind, the focus of ELL achievement intensified, as students who were LEP became a subgroup and figured into adequate yearly progress. In 2006, Prop R allowed Parkway to expand ESOL services in the north area of the district and at Hannah Woods Elementary. In 2007, the federal government and the state of Missouri identified districts for Title III Improvement. Parkway joined almost every other district in the state in Title III Improvement. And in 2008, as a response to Title III Improvement, Missouri joined the WIDA Consortium, World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. Joining WIDA has provided greater commonality around ELL students, standards, curriculum, and assessment in school districts in the state of Missouri and 31 other states in the The ESOL attendance flow is illustrated in this chart. It takes the cooperation of many of Parkway's departments to make this work. Most importantly, with this arrangement, every ELL in Parkway is identified and receives appropriate ESOL services. A more detailed description of the process can be found in the Program Evaluation document. At the elementary, as well as the middle and high school levels, ESOL teachers tailor their instruction to their students' proficiency levels. Students with lower proficiency in English are pulled out for intense ESOL services by the ESOL teacher. As their proficiency increases, support is provided in a push-in model. ESOL teachers collaborate with general education teachers to support Parkway's guaranteed and viable curriculum for all students. The Parkway curriculum is adapted and differentiated for ELLs. At the middle school level, the same philosophy applies. However, due to the nature of the middle school schedule, there are four levels of ESOL offered according to the student's level of English language proficiency. In addition, ESOL TAs are able to push in and support in the content areas. At the high school level, Parkway Central High offers multiple levels of ESOL classes. In addition, specific sheltered courses are provided to ELLs so that they can fulfill both the credit and the content required for high school graduation. North High offers grade-level ESOL support for ELLs who have higher levels of English proficiency. ELLs at North High are proficient enough to be part of English Language Arts classes with targeted support by the ESOL staff. More detail on the description of the programs can be found in the evaluation document. The next part of this evaluation is about the data. The achievement data centers around three main questions. As a result of Parkway's ESOL Program, are ELLs becoming more proficient in the English language? Do ELLs experience academic success while receiving ESOL services? Are ELLs successful after they exit the ESOL Program? Question number one. Assessing comprehension and communication in English state-to-state, or the ACCESS test, much easier to say ACCESS, is a key component of achievement data for ELLs. The ACCESS test is Missouri's mandated English language proficiency instrument required by the federal government and No Child Left Behind. This is the test that is administered and developed through the WIDA Consortium. This chart illustrates what the ACCESS scores tell us. We know that in January and February, when the test is administered, we have very few students at the beginning levels of English language acquisition. We also have very few students at the advanced proficiency levels. This makes sense because students at the advanced levels are those who should be exiting the program. The ACCESS test includes the domains of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. In addition, the test embeds the academic language of math, social studies, and science. So, what else do the ACCESS test results mean? Why are they important? They are used by the state of Missouri to measure the effectiveness of the ESOL programs in school districts across the state and 31 other states. The ACCESS scores are used to figure districts' annual measurable achievement objectives, or AMAOs. AMAO1 data deals with the annual increases in the number or percentage of students making progress in learning English. Parkway ELLs met this objective. AMAO2 data centers around attaining English language proficiency and annual increases in the number or percentage of students attaining English language proficiency by the end of each school year. Again, Parkway has met and does meet these objectives. AMAO3 data is about meeting adequate yearly progress targets. Parkway has met this objective in math in 2010 and 11. It is important to note that MAP tests and EOCs are not designed for students with limited English. In addition, ACCESS scores help ESOL staff make decisions on ELL placement and instructional decisions as well. This chart illustrates that the ACCESS scores are a viable predictor of performance on the MAP Communication Arts Test. And I apologize that these graphs are not very easy to see. Question number two. Are Parkway's ELLs experiencing academic achievement while in the ESOL Program? Between the years 2009 through 12, there was an increase in the proficient scores of 32.8 percent of ELLs on the MAP tests in Communication Arts, and an increase of 32.5 percent of ELLs scoring proficient in the mathematics MAP test. Additional data can be found in the Program Evaluation document as well. Data question number three. Are ELLs achieving academically after they exit the ESOL Program? One year after exiting the ESOL Program, ELLs scored an increase of 10.2 percent proficient in MAP Communication Arts, and 12.4 percent increase in scoring proficient in the mathematics portion of the MAP. Two years after exiting the ESOL Program, an increase of 16.2 percent of ELLs score proficient on the English Language Arts portion of the MAP, and 7.8 percent score proficient in the mathematics portion of the MAP test. So, that brings us to data points for number two. The Program Evaluation Survey Results. The ESOL Program Evaluation surveys included nine guiding questions, as well as questions around Parkway's mission and vision. The guiding questions were created with the input of a team of ESOL teachers. Many of these guiding questions are tied to the ESOL Program goals. The Mission and Vision Survey Results can be found in the Program Evaluation document. However, I would like to highlight the following two points. While the category of "prepare students for their next educational challenge in and out of school" responses were lower than the others, the results also indicate that the ESOL Program assists our students in becoming capable learners, and those responses were higher. 82.6 percent of general education teachers agree or strongly agree that the ESOL Program supports students with limited English. 96.4 percent of parents responded that ESOL Program supports their students. 66.4 percent of general education teachers responded that they collaborate with ESOL teachers. Both ESOL teachers and general education teachers need more time to collaborate on units and lessons for our ELLs. 87.3 percent of our general education teachers responded that Parkway celebrates the diversity of our ELLs. Of note is the difference in the perception of this group with the other survey groups when it comes to celebrating the diversity of our ELLs. 73.2 percent of general education teachers and 82 percent of ESOL staff use data regularly to guide instruction of our ELLs. 60.7 percent of ESOL staff and 54.5 percent of general education teachers responded "agree" or strongly agree regarding professional development opportunities. 57.2 percent of ESOL staff and 49.2 percent of general education teachers feel that we provide sufficient opportunities for our parents of ELLs. Over 80 percent of elementary and high school parents responded favorably regarding opportunities provided to them. 69.5 percent of middle school parents responded "agree" or strongly agree when it comes to parent involvement. 55.9 percent of ESOL staff responded "agree" or strongly agree to the questions about resources. 36.6 percent of general education teachers and 76.9 percent of principals answered "agree" or strongly agree about resources for ELLs. So, that brings us to the future and the recommendations. Using the surveys to identify areas of need, and with the input of ESOL staff, the recommendations are as follows. Increase professional development for general education and ESOL teachers. In June of this summer, 2013, Parkway K-12's ELL Summer Institute will take place. Sessions will be offered to specifically address areas of need identified in the Program Evaluation surveys, such as using data to guide instruction, collaborative teaching strategies, language acquisition, celebrating diversity, et cetera. It will be a two-day institute. The next recommendation is to increase collaboration among ESOL staff and general education staff. The ELL Summer Institute will include workshop sessions on collaboration. There will be time for ESOL and general education teachers to plan for collaboration opportunities for the upcoming school year. It's not enough to just have a workshop in the summer, but plans need to be made for ongoing collaboration throughout the year. The next recommendation is around ELL parent and family involvement. We need to provide more support and involvement of our families of ELLs. The ESOL staff will create an ELL parent action plan that will be implemented by Parkway schools in order to ensure that our ELL families will be informed and involved in their children's education. In addition, more opportunities will be created to involve ELL families at the district The following recommendation is around ELL and special school district. Improvement continues to be needed in the identification and providing services to ELLs with special needs. We must continue to research and establish more effective ways to work with special school district in order to identify and serve ELLs with special needs. And then, the final recommendation is that we have a need to gather more data on ELL language acquisition. In July of this summer, ESOL teachers will research and select a program to pilot for an ongoing assessment system. This system will allow the ESOL staff to acquire ongoing frequent data checks regarding the progress of ELL's acquisition of English. And now, I will be happy to hear any questions you may have regarding this Program Evaluation.
Chris?
Nancy? Tienes hambre?
No, 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 no.
I just wanted to know if she was hungry.
Yes. No tengo hambre.
How long does it normally take a student to become proficient in English that they can make it on their own? And would you agree that generally, it's the younger elementary students that adapt more quickly?
Generally, that is true. In kindergarten and first grade, those classrooms are so language-rich, the students are still learning to read. As they get older, then they're reading to learn, and so the process takes a little longer. A lot of the research shows that it takes at least three to five years for students to acquire English, especially in social language. Some of the students, the social language and academic language goes hand in hand. The older the students are, and the more ground there is to make up and cover, it can take five to seven years and sometimes longer, like our new ELLs who are in high school.
I saw we have about 600 ELL students. Where do they fall? Are most of them in the younger areas?
Yes, yes. About half of our ELL student population is K2.
I was curious with the implementation of the PLCs this year, how it is used with the ESOL staff? How do you think that's going? Is it going to help fulfill some of your goals?
It's already starting to fulfill the goals, the recommendations. Those conversations are already happening at the PLC level. It has been a wonderful addition to the development for ESOL teachers to have that late start time, to collaborate with each other. A lot of times, they're the only two teachers in their building, or if it's a traveling ESOL teacher, we have one here, she may not see other ESOL teachers for quite a few weeks. So, it has been a wonderful opportunity for them to collaborate, to look at student work together, to make goals. And really, it's been amazing. It has been extremely, extremely successful.
Do they meet as a group sometimes, or is it pretty much by school? How does that work?
On the Late Start Wednesdays, there are right now multiple school PLCs, and in the elementary, we have three of them. What we've discovered, this is our learning year, what we've discovered is that next year, we're looking to having those multiple school PLCs meet in one location where they can share as a large group and then break into grade levels, K2, 3, 5, and the traveling teachers. Very exciting.
I just want to say, last Wednesday, I saw one of your groups at Green Trails that was very, very engaged and active and doing really very, very active work in data use.
Just one suggestion. I don't know if you can dial back to your slide number 18?
Okay. Let's see which one is that. I already took my glasses off. Ah, okay. Let's see. This one?
Yeah, that's the one. I think we should probably have confetti come down and celebratory, maybe call the band back out. Wow.
I agree. I agree.
Maybe burying the lead a little bit. You can put that slide a little closer to the top, finish with it. Feel free to copy it, stick it everywhere.
Have some fireworks going off.
Well done. Congratulations.
Yes, yes. I agree. Tremendous growth.
Nancy, I have a question for you. On the subject of data, are we collecting any data on what our ELLs do once they graduate from Parkway?
Not specifically. That's part of just the general graduate survey.
So, there's no way to kind of segregate that out and compare the rates of, let's say, for instance, going to four-year college with that of our general education students?
That would be a Nathan question, but I'm sure that we could do that. I'm sure that we could do that.
You know, I just think, generally speaking, we need to pay more attention to what happens to kids when they leave Parkway. And I think that if we, you know, kind of, maybe it's a backwards design thing, if we thought about what these kids are doing, maybe we could figure out, you know, how to help them get to where they need to be.
What I think would be especially important to know is that not only the students who graduate who are tagged LEP, but also the students who were once in the program.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's a little harder to collect, but we're getting better. We are getting better.
I remember when I was in high school, we had a student that was from Israel, never spoken English before, and he came in high school. And by the time we graduated, he outpaced every student in my high school by leaps and bounds. And I just, I love to hear stories like that because, you know, back in those days, there were not these great ESOL programs, and the teachers just threw themselves into letting this kid learn English and succeed, and it was just great. And I think, you know, I'm sure we have so many kids that follow that path.
That's amazing.
Now, anybody?
Has there been any, I think there could be some opportunities with regards to community education, particularly with the parent, you know, engaging the parents. Has there been any thoughts as far as like with any English for adults? Like if there's, you know, if you guys ever engage them?
Parkway does have an adult ESL Program. It's funded differently, and it's sort of in a different sphere, but however, the ESOL teachers do a great job of sharing that information with the parents of our English language learners.
That's a program, you remember when in the fall, we were talking about community a little bit, they came, large numbers of people served in Parkway, but also beyond Parkway at various locations. So, it's a, but I know Paul Tandy can, who's been working on that program, Paul could have more details. I think Paul's busy assessing some storm stuff here, but definitely, I think you're right. I mean, long-term, I think it could be.
I mean, there's just got to be some overlap there.
Yes, absolutely.
I just had a final question, too. In your presentation, about 60 percent of the ESOL teachers felt they didn't have enough resources to really deliver the Parkway curriculum. Could you elaborate on that?
And really, it was just sort of labeled as resources. So, there was a question about technology, and that was a little higher. I know that the ESOL teachers do talk a lot about a resource that there is a recommendation for, which is an ongoing language acquisition system. So, I know that that has been one resource that they have been looking.
And you're going to be looking at that this summer?
Yes, we will be piloting one or two next year.
I just wanted to ask about the opportunities for parents who don't speak English.
Yes.
How does a school interact with parents who don't speak English on behalf of their children?
Every school is a little different with their approach to parents and the interaction with parents. That is why in July with the workshop, I want us to get really clear about best practice. We have a lot of new ESOL staff, so to make sure that they all know what all the other buildings are doing, some of the really neat ideas for parent involvement. It is a focus. Last, this past year, there were two Project Parkway meetings with ESL Parent Advisory. I would like for that to continue. And every year, have ESL Parent Advisory during the first semester of Project Parkway and then the second semester to get input from parents and to a place where they can come and bring their questions about Parkway and the system and how the district works and all of those things.
You might want to just highlight a little bit, we do have materials in some languages for parents.
Yes, and that is going to become much more common with Infinite Campus kind of rolling over in a lot of other areas. An headline, you can go in, click on a language, it'll translate the page into other languages.
Do you have a feel when students go home, how much English is actually spoken? It seems that they get the experience in school, but what happens when they get home if their parents are not English-speaking, or even going to the exercise of the ESL Program?
Right. Well, as you notice, one of the program goals is to maintain students' native languages at home. And so, the ESOL staff very much stresses to the student and the parents, speak your native language at home, that's the language of your extended family. And the, you know, they're immersed in English the entire school day. So, we really do urge that they speak their native language at home.
Okay, so there's no discouragement of that?
No, absolutely not.
Nancy, thank you very much. I know a lot of hard work went into your report. We appreciate it and we applaud your success. And to our teachers who stuck with us, thank you very much for everything you do for our students. You really, really, really make an impact on these children's lives.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I skipped ahead too fast. Okay. At this time, may we have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved the ESOL program evaluation is presented in the April 10, 2013 board material.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. The owner of a dark blue sedan who parked on the circle, please come to, they'll look at Nancy, please come to the exit over there.
Your hubcaps are gone.
The caps are gone. That's the zinger of the night, Mr. Jacob.
For the children. I'm so sorry. All right. 12.01, I'd like to call in Mr. Paul Tandy, Director of Communications, Mr. Les Landis of Landis and Associates, and Dr. Craig Larson of Patron Insight to come on down, tell us about the early childhood.
And can I comment? It just occurred to me, no one's coughing tonight. I think at our last board meeting, we were all on ours.
Wow, that's true.
It was awful. So congratulations, everyone. We're all healthy today. Yeah.
That's Les's kind. I think I have one of your.
I've had some more too. Just in case.
You want to take a break for a minute?
Craig, do you want to just pause for a moment or? Craig, do you want to?
I'm over here.
Okay, all right.
We have lots going on, don't we? That we don't even know about.
This has been a very interesting meeting.
Les, do you, do you need some time?
That was my hallucination.
Is it okay?
Uh, come get us, we're coming. Uh oh.
Well, good evening. We're, tonight, we're very pleased to present to you the Early Childhood Education Demographic and Marketing, Market Study. And just a little background of kind of how we got here and the rationale for this study kind of started a few years ago through the program evaluation for early childhood ed. And one of the things we've learned over the years is the value of kids getting some sort of pre-K experience in terms of being successful in school. And, and then as we got into our facilities planning through Project Parkway, our long-range planning through the Facilities 2020 Action Team, Dr. Marty directed the administration to take a look at our early childhood program and, and do some study in the community to determine if our current program offerings and locations where we have our services are where they need to be in terms of the need in the community and so forth, and, and any implications that might have for our long-range facilities planning. As you know, right now, we basically have programs kind of where we have space, where we've had space available. And as we look at long-term in the next 10 years, we were looking at, do we need to look at changes to where we have those program offerings and, and get some data to help us with that? So last fall, at the direction again of Dr. Marty, we sought the assistance with Les Landis through Landis and Associates. And Les assembled a fantastic team of experts with various areas of expertise to assist us, including Dr. Craig Larson, who's here tonight as well. The study consisted of a demographic study of our community focusing on families with children under the age of five, as well as a opinion survey, a telephone survey of, of families in the community who are either currently using our early childhood services or other families who are using other services. And then finally, a, what you'd call kind of a business review of our current program. And then some recommendations from, from all the study that was done. I know you've looked at the report, all the files that are online, and I know it's a lot of data. It's phenomenal, it's a phenomenal amount of information. The gentleman behind me are going to really work their best to get it in in 20 minutes. So what I would ask is that if you can, because they're really going to try to honor our time, and they're going to really try to move through that. So if you can hold your questions until the end, they'll get through the, the presentation quickly and then we'll have some conversation. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Les Landis.
It is really a great pleasure to be here, and I guess I really want to start with just a very simple thank you, because this is a great project. It's been wonderful working on it. It's been full of wonderful insight, had the opportunity to work with some extraordinary people, not the least of which is Keith and his great team. You have a lot to be proud of with those folks. I think, you know, one of the first things that we need to point out is that this is a massive study. And right here, of course, is the binder that we're, that we have the entire report in. And I do want you to know that we plan to go through this page by page. So I hope you don't have anything to do for the next couple of days. So I'm kidding, of course. But we are going to try and go through this quite quickly. The, the data that you're going to see is really just kind of the tip of the iceberg. And we think that once you get into the data and actually have the opportunity to look at it more in-depth, you'll find it quite, quite extraordinary. So right here is basically the same thing that Paul just got done telling you. The overview of the study is, you know, we did the demographic, I'm going to have to put on my glasses, the opinion survey, and then Paul, or excuse me, Craig did some great interviews with staff, local private providers, other school districts. He also did some work on the National State Direction for Early Childhood Education. And then we put together a SWOT analysis and some recommendations, as Paul was saying earlier. So the demographic data, this is an overview of some of the key findings. Between 2000, 2010, the district's under-five-year-old population decreased by 13.95 or 16.4%. By contrast, that same cohort increased statewide by 5.5%. So there is a definite trend here that goes against what's happening statewide. 28.2% of the district households have children. You can see the number there. Households with children spend an average of $2,376 on childcare per year. Isn't it great you can get that kind of data? 236 licensed daycare facilities are within the district or within one mile of its borders. So that's a huge number, huge number. The combined capacity of all of those facilities is 8,982. And the available zero-to-four-year-olds from 2010 census total 7105. So you can do the math, right? You can see that there's some excess capacity there between the 89, excuse, yeah, the 8982 capacity and the available kids. Now, that also does not include the 650 additional five-year-olds in preschool. That's an estimated number that could also be filling some of those seats. Also, there's an estimated 87.8% of your three- and four-year-olds in this district that are already enrolled in some form of early childhood education program. Now, there is a fairly large margin of error on this, 24%, but at a minimum, you've got, you know, take 24 from 87, that gives you 63.8% of all the three-to-four-year-olds are already in some kind of early childhood education program. So you're saturating the market pretty well already. I'm not going to take you through all of this, but these are just some samples of some of the data that is accompanied by charts and maps in this report. You can see there's adult education levels, market share, kindergarten enrollment projections, lots of different things. The one thing that I am going to do, just to kind of give you a glimpse of what, how rich this data is, we're going to talk a little bit about the site location recommendations. So what you see here is actually the data from the, a program that is, that has been developed by Preston Smith, who's with, who's one of the folks on our team. And all of these factors right here go into an algorithm that allows him to look at the entire district and determine where are the key spots, where are going to be the best places to have a site location, an early childhood site location, and where are the places that are not the best. So if you take a look at this, this is what we call kind of a hot map. And basically, this map says that anything that's in dark green is really a good place based on that algorithm, is a good place for you to build some sites or to put in some locations. And those that are in the red are places where you probably don't want to go because of the various factors that are considered in that algorithm. So there are lots of maps like this in that report that will give you a better sense of a lot of different kinds of things, including this location evaluation assessment. And I think with that, I'm going to now turn it over to Craig Larson, who's going to talk about the opinion survey and some of the interviews that he conducted.
Thanks, Les. I want to start off with two thank yous and congratulations. Thank you for letting me be involved in this. It's a very interesting study and ended up kind of getting deeper and deeper into it and enjoyed it. But my congratulations are really to two, two groups. First, to the staff that Jean leads. I'm not here as an evaluator, but you know, when you interview that many people, you can't help but make opinions. And you're really fortunate to have very committed, very well-trained people who work together very, very well and, and kind of know each other's roles and jobs. So it's, it's a terrific program. It really is a terrific program. So congratulations to them for that. But you know, when you say that, then I want to add congratulations to all of you and to the administration for saying, you know, we have a terrific program, but where should it be going? What should that program look like five years from now? And how would we know that? And that's what you've done here. So it's really been a delight to work on this, and I appreciate all the work that you all have, have sponsored here. The first information I'm going to present you is the summary of opinion research. And as Les said, we're not trying to present all of it, so we just pulled a few of the pieces out of here. This was done by Patron Insight, my, my partner, I'm now associated with Patron Insight, Ken DeSieghart. And you can see that what he's done is a number of 12- to 15-minute telephone interviews, 411 randomly selected head of household patrons within the district. Randomly selected meaning they literally dialed randomly and asked, would you take this survey? But first set of questions were, do you have a child under the age of five? So random but only to people that have children under the age of five, not yet in kindergarten. They also, the next slide, I guess I have to do that, don't I? Okay, the next slide shows that you asked, Parkway asked for a rather specific set of information from this survey. So some of the parents were your parents, but because you wanted to talk to parents using other programs and not particularly involved in, in Parkway in order to make some comparisons and to gather some information about them, they're much more heavily represented in this survey. And we agreed in planning work that 100 of the families, turns out to be 108, would have no, they would be using no early childhood services at all, so that we could ask them the questions, why not? And kind of come to some understanding. That's actually maybe unique data. I've talked to a lot of people over the last few months. No one's ever heard of a district doing that. So very interesting data. Again, can't give you all the findings, but we'll give you a few. The, the first one is, it's interesting when you talk to people and just say, when you think of early childhood education, what do you think of? You hear preschool, they, they think of that. But beyond that, they don't necessarily volunteer, even parents as teachers, they don't volunteer much of the kind of range of programs that Parkway has and some other districts would have as well. So then that, that survey followed up by saying, well, have you heard of this? Have you heard of this? Have you heard of this? And even doing that, the only other program that got a 50% response is Parents as Teachers, which started in Missouri, has a long history in Missouri, and, and you know, a lot of parents said, oh yeah, I've, I've heard of that. So, but beyond that, they, they hadn't heard of the kind of childhood, childhood parent interaction classes or any of the questions that we asked them, beyond 50%. And many lower than that. So there's really a lot of opportunity here to provide information to families. The third finding, again, just picking some out, the level of agreement with various belief statements about early childhood education. Advance the slide, thank you. The level of agreement was modest in most cases. So they had 14 different statements to agree to, and, and these are the only ones that got 50%. And it's kind of interesting, early childhood programs are expensive. Kindergarten teachers would probably prefer to have students who've been through early childhood education. Early childhood education students tend to do better socially in school. Early childhood students do better academically in school. And information about early childhood programs is difficult to come by. Again, they were given a set of statements, and which of these do you agree with? These are the ones that, that kind of bubble to the top. Finding eight, parents of children enrolled in non-Parkway programs are nearly as satisfied, thank you, nearly as satisfied with the services in those non-Parkway as Parkway. That's kind of said backwards in my mind, because the reality is, what we found is that, and it's a smaller number on the survey because of the way we were doing the survey, but parents that were involved in Parkway loved the program. I mean, it was just off the chart. Ken's, I actually never see data like that. They, if they're involved in Parents as Teachers, they're involved in the preschool child interaction classes, they just love it. You know, like 95-plus percent saying they recommend it and all of that. But it's an important data point to know that if you ask parents who are involved in almost all of the other programs in the community, they like them too. Maybe a little less, but not dramatically less. So parents tend to put their kids in programs that they like and probably don't stay if they don't. I mean, that's, that's a conclusion I would draw that, draw from that. So the last finding that we're going to share is that four out of 10 non-users who participated in the survey say they had investigated early childhood education programs. So one of the questions this whole process wanted to know is, are there parents out there that are not using any early childhood programs now, perhaps not using any at all, but certainly not using Parkway's, who we could somehow market to and, and bring into the program? And among the non-users, the reasons that they expressed as to why they weren't was, one, a desire to keep their children at home. You know, and you could kind of follow up and get a lot of reasons why a mom might be staying home, maybe she worked, maybe the family feels that that's the best thing to do. So they're keeping their child at home. And two, they find that the costs of early childhood programs are expensive. So again, cost and then that desire to, to have the child with them at home. Lots more data for you to look at, the other findings, and you can delve into that. It's, it's multiple pages of data. The interviews I did need to be kind of understood. They're quite different. I mean, it was me talking to people and, and we agreed in advance the kind of questions I was going to ask staff. I talked to Jean, actually, to make sure I kind of had a general understanding of things and, and shared kind of questions I thought would be helpful. She and I talked that through, but it's not the same kind of fact data. So I just want to say that. And when you look at the, the private and public, I'm talking to very few people representing a large group. So just be fair about that. So in terms of the staff, and you look at the, the report I wrote, lots more information there. But I would stress again that it's a very collaborative, very positive climate. And I was delighted every time I talked to someone to kind of learn more about the services that they offered and very student and family-friendly, figuring out, how could they better serve students? Parkway does some things that I don't think any other districts do. You've got a family liaison counselor who helps families that maybe just have a discipline problem with their kids. And they get a reference, they're referred by a Parents as Teacher Coordinator or perhaps a preschool teacher, and you actually help that family figure out how to solve that problem, or maybe it's a bigger problem and, and there's a next step. That, that kind of service is, is wonderful and, and something that the staff is very proud to be able to provide. The one thing I found is, and this is sort of tricky to say, is that Parkway, Project Parkway has been such a big force in this community over a number of years. And I, I looked at that work, not the first time I'd seen it, and I know that Pat Tyke was, was on it. But it seemed to me that from talking to staff, there's not a disconnect. That would be the wrong thing to say. That would be the wrong thing to say. It's just when Project Parkway was designed, it wasn't necessarily with the thought that early childhood education should be a part of it, you know, built into it. And you know, it's a great opportunity to really do some of the things that you've ended up saying, you want to create competent, curious learners? Why wouldn't you start with the little guys? And that's almost exactly what those programs are designed to do. So sort of picked up this bit of a disconnect around strategic planning in that way. Which is not to say that they didn't know about Project Parkway, they knew about it. And I didn't really dwell into that. It was just kind of interesting that they were very engaged in doing their work, worked very well together, didn't necessarily have the larger picture of the district. The private preschool directors, and we happen to be represented tonight, we have Sue and Laura Hockensmith are here from the Lakeside Children's Academy. They were one of the three programs I talked to, and they were interested, and many of you know Sue, she was a longtime board member. But what I found in talking to them is that especially the other two programs, to be fair, felt like they really didn't have that much information about what Parkway offered. Sometimes that was, in one case, it was because the director hadn't been there that long, and another case, the director had been there a long time, had been more involved with the district when there were federal grants, and that caused her to be able to use more of the services that Parkway provided, those grants weren't available. So it's just the last few years that they had felt somewhat disconnected from the district. And again, I talked to a few, there are dozens out there that I didn't get any information from. A theme I heard from all three conversations is that with Parkway going to full-day kindergarten, the staff and the parents in the private programs really want more information about what can we do to help our kids be ready and successful in full-day kindergarten? What's different about that? So that's a great opportunity, and it came up. The other thing I learned is that private preschool staff have to get a certain number of credits or, you know, have to be involved in professional development, and they really respect Parkway and, to be fair, Rockwood, because many of the programs serve kids in both communities. Respect the staff, the quality of the staff that public schools have, their expertise, and would love to learn more about early childhood issues through interaction with that staff. The public preschools, preschool directors that I talked to, I kind of looked for directors that had a good reputation, Jean and I talked about it. I was also interested, because I knew I was going to be looking at the business side, in programs that paid teachers around a public school teacher's salary. That's fairly uncommon, very uncommon in the state of Missouri, very uncommon actually even in this region. So these districts, they don't all have exactly the same system, but they do pay better than many programs. So that's sort of why we picked the ones we're looking at. What I came up with is that screening students is the top priority, at least from the director's point of view. The most important thing that we can do is to identify any kind of delay a student would have or experience as early as possible. That's the most important single thing that all programs seem to agree to. So how can you get connected to families and help them understand the importance of that? Could be minor problems, could be major problem. You know, the point is, you can really help a family by doing that screening. All the programs are very involved in helping special education students integrate into the programs. That's a fairly unique feature of public preschools versus private. Not 100% unique, but certainly a commitment that all of the directors had. A point of difference that was interesting is that Ferguson, Florence, Rockwood, and Clayton all serve about 30% of their eventual kindergarteners through preschools. Parkway's right now serving about 15%. And you know, I'm not, later I'm not going to be recommending a lot of growth there, but obviously, we probably have the potential to grow if you wanted to, I would think. So the business review, and I'll try to go quickly here. Just to give you a high-level overview, you're spending right around $2 million right now as a school district supporting early childhood programs. 1.3 million of that is to provide for the Parents as Teachers program. Missouri provides another $300,000. That's a huge shift over seven years or so. It used to be the state provided most of the funds. That's, and you're one of the few districts in the region that has really kept the quality of the program at the same level it's been. An interesting reality is, a lot of parents don't know that. I mean, they just, because they hear the news, they hear other districts, that Rockwood has dramatically reduced their funding and the number of visits and so forth, you've not done that. So congratulations, but also a good marketing opportunity. Another $180,000 to pay for services that may be fee-supported but not completely fee-supported. And then, right now, about half a million dollars, a little more, to subsidize preschools through scholarships. The Parents as Teachers program, which is the single largest cost, as the numbers just showed, kind of interesting, if you look at the slide on that, you can see that, I don't know that I would say there's a trend in that data over the last four years, but when I asked Jean and her staff, they said, well, if you went back 10 or 12 years, you'd see a trend. It's down. We're seeing fewer kids now than we used to, even if it seems somewhat flat or consistent right now. The next slide shows the age of students that are being touched. Birth to one, about 370, and then the other numbers are more similar, one to two, two to three, four to five, three to four, four to five, with a total of about 2,800 children being served. Round number, because you know, the 7,000 number, as Les already pointed out in the demographic data, isn't exactly right, because you've got at least 650 kids that didn't qualify to go into kindergarten that are five. But you're touching about 40%, it looks like. Again, the main question, I think, the program wanted to know, are there more families that we could be serving? And I think the answer is pretty clear that there are. One of the issues that I was curious about is, you know, is screening, which I didn't stress is a major cost to the district, is screening an issue financially. And you do spend some money, it is in that $180,000, but the state of Missouri provides $30 to screen a child one time each year, which is actually a pretty significant commitment on the state's part. And they do that for the very reason that the director said it's so important, is to try to identify kids who need assistance as quickly as possible. That reimbursement pretty much provides for the cost of the program, whether it's through Parents as Teachers or the screening program. The data down below kind of shows you the breakout of the ages of students being screened, and again, about 40% of the available population being screened. The scholarships, this has grown with the economy. The program requires that a family come and ask for a scholarship, they fill out forms, and they have to qualify for free and reduced lunch, they use the federal guidelines. And you know, it's more people have found out about that, or as more people are in a situation where you need that help, that has become a significant budget item. I think if you went back 10 years ago, it was probably a budget item, but not significant. So something for you all to think about. The tuition costs, I thought were kind of interesting, and Jean and her staff actually talked about this quite a bit. If you look at the full-day, five-day-a-week preschool programs that are offered, and I just have a listing of some, looking mostly at public school, but also a couple private schools in the area, at $240 a week, Parkway's kind of middle of the pack there. You can kind of see that data itself. That contrasts pretty dramatically with the part-day tuition, which is shown in the next graph. I don't have as many individuals broken out. But you can see that Parkway's numbers there, which are bolded in the top, are quite a bit higher in two-day-a-week, three-day-a-week, four-day-a-week, five-day-a-week. Mostly, these are all half-day, three-hour programs. And right below that is the Rockwood number, which, you know, some families are literally making a decision, if they live close, they can go either direction. And then the average public schools without Parkway included is the next number, and then the average private programs. So in that case, you know, it seems pretty obvious that the tuition rates are high. And several of the staff, as I talked to them, and I would say, if there was one thing you'd like to see different or change, what would that be? The only thing that I heard consistently was, it'd be nicer if our preschool tuition rates were lower, so that we could serve more families. I'm not going to really talk about the next slide, early childhood education. Just stress that it's a state-by-state issue in the United States. You do hear the president, in his current budget, he talked about wanting to guarantee a four-year-old child in the United States in education, but that's kind of an anomaly. It's really for, would be similar, I assume, to Head Start. Mostly, all of the legislation around preschool, state-by-state, it varies dramatically. We have now three states in the union that literally fund four-year-old preschool for everybody that wants it. And we have a number of states that have laws that provide funding, but if they're not fully funded yet, they couldn't take all comers. But we have states, more states than that, that don't do anything with early childhood. So it's really quite varied. Missouri used to be a leader in this area. I would say it's not a leader now, but it's, you know, it's somewhere in the middle of the states that are working pretty hard at it. Money is the primary issue, as it is in so many things in these kinds of issues. So I'm sure Les is ready to take over.
So in the interest of time, I'm going to literally just kind of blast through these things, so that we can get to the recommendations here and give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. So on the strengths, some of these you've pretty much heard from the stuff that we've already talked about, the very strong supportive relationships among the early childhood services within Parkway School District and the Special School District. Very good relationship there, strong feature of the system. Child screening provided free throughout the year, absolutely its strength. Parents as Teachers has not been cut back, as Craig was mentioning, at PSD while it has been in other places. Parent-child interaction classes are really a valued service to the families, and the families in financial need are supported by a very strong scholarship program. Some weaknesses, Parkway early childhood programs, as you can see them there, reach less than half of the children in the district right now. Parkway does not appear to have a well-defined mission as an early childhood service provider. It's clearly something that's a priority, something that is done well, but the definition of the mission could be strengthened. Parkway's part-time preschool classes are more expensive than most neighboring school districts and most private programs. And the early childhood staff report limited active relationships with private preschool directors in the area where we think there might be some opportunity. I'm going to go ahead and kind of go through these, okay? So with the opportunities, the district, including its partnership with the Special School District for Special Education Services, is serving only about 14% to 16% of the children within its borders with its preschools. Satisfaction levels are equally high among Parkway School District parents and users of other programs. You might wonder why we see that as an opportunity. We'll talk about that in a moment when we get to the recommendations. The child screening services are not understood by some private school directors. Once again, we see that actually as an opportunity, if we can do education and communication and marketing better. Some private preschools want to align their programs with expectations from Parkway's full-day kindergarten staff. As Craig was pointing out, they have very high regard for the program here. Some threats, Parkway funding for early childhood education is about $2 million. That's a lot of money. And there's going to have to be some decisions made about how sustainable that is over the long haul. State politicians support early childhood programs, but appear focused on preschool opportunities for needy children versus the value of child screening for all. I'm beginning to think that with the national agenda, the way it is with early childhood education, as well as the state, I think we're going to see a little bit of a change in some of the political views about that as we move forward. Threat, the expansion of district ECE services could require space that you currently do not have available. If the district uses taxes to support those services beyond taxpayer expectations, there could be controversy about how the district is spending its tax dollars. It's going to be perhaps a larger issue as people become more aware of exactly how generous this district has been in serving children in the early childhood age group. And then, as we say here, 87.8% of the three-to-four-year-olds already enrolled in some facility with limited opportunity for further growth within that age group. So those are some of the threats, and going to get into the recommendations here. One of the things that we wanted to start off with before we got into the recommendations is really this basic question that we feel the district needs to ask itself. So what is really the main goal for early childhood education? Is it to increase the market share of available preschool-aged children? Or is it to ensure that families of all children are informed of and are able to enroll in qualified early childhood education programs regardless of what organization provides them? That is implications for everything from facilities, locations, to marketing, huge implications. That core question is something you're really going to have to grapple with. Craig, you want to take these next two?
So with that question on the table, the recommendations are not exactly why you hired us. You wanted the information, so we kind of offer these for what they're worth. And I know the next step is going to be you all deciding what to do, so that's an important reality. But it seems to me that a more cost-effective and a quicker way to make a bigger impact with early childhood education within the boundaries of the district is to collaborate and create partnerships with those people who are already out there doing their work. Enrolling somewhere around 80% of the students, I mean, you know, they've already got them, getting them away is going to be difficult. So, and I think many of them, and not all, I know that, because as I called some of the preschools to try to interview them, they wouldn't talk to me. So some of them view you as competition, they're not going to work with you. But many will. And I think you could set relationships with them that could be really helpful. Certainly do encourage screening and to encourage those programs to help their families know about Parents as Teachers and get involved in that. It's free. I mean, there's no reason not to do that. And some of the preschool directors, I'm sure, would be very open to doing that. I think you could also provide professional development. This might be a cost item, it might be a shared expense, probably wouldn't want to do it free, but raise the level of the programs within the district by helping give them staff development. I would do that in a collaborative way. I mean, I wouldn't say, here's what we're doing, you can come and join if you want. I'd sit down and talk to them. There's actually a network of directors that you could work with to do that. But I think you could, over a few years perhaps, define the expectations for three-year-olds and four-year-olds. What are good programs? What do those look like? Obviously, you're going to be delivering those yourselves, but really help other programs know, here are the standards. And I think you have the leadership already in their minds to do that. Financial recommendations, again, we're not sure where we're going to go with this. But I ended up being very impressed that the district realizes that, you know, you're 96% locally funded. So why should you wait to see what Missouri's going to do? You know, if they're your kids, you're trying to serve all kids, you're going to be, you know, working with those children as they come through the district, why not, you know, take on that task now, as many states are, and Missouri would like to, but is held back by finances. I think you might want to look at the cost of all these programs, using, you know, a good business model to say, do all those tuitions? Is that what it has to be? What are class sizes? And I'm not criticizing anybody in that, it's just when you look at the numbers, the numbers are pretty obvious, that for some reason Parkway's charging a fair amount of money for the part-day programs and giving out a lot of scholarships. So maybe there could be some opportunity to think that through. So says how the scholarships are using. It would be my suggestion, and this is relatively personal, but in talking to people over the years, full-day programs, five-day-a-week full-day programs are really appreciated by two-income earners, and they're a great opportunity for you as a district to get folks connected to Parkway. I mean, they're in your programs, and they tend to be very bought into the district over time. And you're closer to a break, even on that, it depends upon scholarships and looking at how the money is awarded. But I think you could probably set up more rooms as space and interest was available, and I would consider doing that. I also think that summer programs, and the district's gone back and forth on that over the years, you remember, I worked here at one time, but summer programs can be fee-based, but provide a service to families, but also a great way to get families aware of the quality of the facilities and the teachers and the kinds of things that you could do for children and maybe attract them either away from other programs, or more likely, just have them be aware of the quality of Parkway and what's available. Les, you want to wrap it up?
So we're right at the finish line, two more slides. Strategy planning, program enhancements. Child screening definitely should be expanded. There's clearly an opportunity there and a need there and a desire. Align the mission of ECE and the Project Parkway, as we talked about- Align the mission of ECE and the project Parkway, as we talked about before. Budget to serve as a leader in the EC programming within the area. Plan an active role in the regional network of EC directors. We know that there's an opportunity there. And seek to align some quality instructional practices in public and private early childhood programs throughout the district. And the last one is about marketing and communication. This kind of goes to the point that we were making before. You can look at marketing as something that you do to try and steal people away from a competitive point of view, and that's very costly. Or you can look at it as a communication tool to try and build a network of understanding where you have all of the ships who are lifted by a rising tide. So, create different types of communication strategies, tactics, and materials for different target groups and programs. We looked at some of the materials, and right now, we think that there's an opportunity for more targeting. Clarify, specify, amplify the messaging, so that we make sure that we're really targeting the right people with the right message. One possibility is to create a distinct web address specifically for early childhood education to help reinforce the Parkway School District as ECE experts. And then, lastly, explore potential options for joint marketing and communication and collaboration with other districts and local private schools. So, those are the things that we think could be beneficial to Craig's point. We were not requested to submit recommendations, but we wanted to do this as, I guess, sort of a value-added feature. So, with that...
We actually have one more slide.
Yes. There is one more slide.
Yeah. And Paul's not here, so I'm going to speak.
Oh, you're going to do it? Okay, good. Well, I'll go ahead and put it up there then.
Just real quick, there's going to be some opportunity here in the next couple of weeks to have Les and Craig provide this report to others. The first one's going to be next Wednesday to the Project Parkway Steering Committee. So, we're going to spend some time allowing this presentation and feedback to that group. We'll probably have them work with our SUC-10's action team pretty closely to establish further understanding. And we too did, you know, we had a lot of time with these folks, but as you can see, there's a lot of information, so we're all trying to do the reading. Another important group, which was mentioned, is the Facility 2020 group, because they really need to know a lot of things about this report. The demographics, where children are located, the potential growth of early childhood programs, if we do anything with the facilities, what would be appropriate. And then, finally, we are giving a commitment, we just don't, I'm prepared to do that yet, but certainly, at some point, we'll come back to you and be real clear about some recommendations, some things that we want to take on. I just thank Les and Craig to give us some recommendations that we can start biting into. I think they're very good, beginning some thinking. And so, we want to take those, and we have to be careful, you know, don't overdo it, and we measure those, how we can do those, but we think there's some nuggets there to start looking at, and then to look at a timeline to further enhance the program. And then, I just simply want to thank again the work that they did. Sometimes, when you work with people, you have a level, are you not satisfied, satisfied? Are you, do they wow you a little bit? And I would say they exceeded our expectations, at least mine. I'll speak personally, but I think I can speak for most people that have heard the report. The depth of information, the depth of study, what they have left us with, we could spend probably a couple of years on working on this. So, it's helpful for our facilities, it's helpful for early childhood program, it's an important study for how we can work in partnerships, there's just so much we can grab on here. So, I thank them, they were a pleasure to work with. I want to compliment them, they were complimentary to us, but they really worked very well with us all and really did exceed what we would have expected.
And, you know, if there is such a thing as a competitive advantage, I think this data is a competitive advantage for you guys. I don't think many districts have invested in this kind of work to really understand what the opportunities are, particularly in early childhood education. So, I think you've got something that's very valuable, and it's been a real pleasure doing it for you. We're happy to try and answer any questions if you have them, or if everybody's ready to sort of, oh, good, all right, jump in.
Well, mine's not really a question, I just wanted to thank you and Craig for putting this together, the time you spent. I know we paid for it, but I think we got our money's worth. And when I look at it, I mean, I think you hit a lot of things, nail right on the head. And if anything, we have a lot of work to do, and this is going to be a good roadmap, I think, to get there. So, I just want to thank you for that.
Well, and I think, again, you know, we're happy to provide the recommendations, but there's so much rich data that your own expertise is going to be able to extract more out of than we've been providing to you already.
I think to leverage off Dr. Marty's comment and something you mentioned in your presentation about the rising tide lifting all boats.
Right.
This is public record, so I'm sure Lakeside will be delving deeply into the data here too, and that's not a bad thing.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to thank Sue and Laura for coming tonight. Sue, I know for a long time you have wanted more collaboration between Parkway and the private school, private preschools. And so, I'm glad you got on board with this, and hopefully you'll continue, I know you will. And don't you kind of miss sitting on the side of the table once in a while? But it's an enormous amount to absorb, and I think we have a great cheerleader in Dr. Marty for moving this forward.
Absolutely.
With our strategic plan and with his interest in early childhood education, his experience. So, I don't think any of us want this sitting on a shelf. We want it to keep moving forward.
It makes great reading in front of the fire.
I wanted to say thank you for summarizing it, because there's a lot of information there.
Oh, I'm telling you. Yeah, it was like putting a two-pound sausage in a one-pound skin, but...
That's kind of blibid.
Yeah.
I just want to say that you got many of our staff here tonight, and I think we would be negligent if we didn't thank them. You know, it's always hard when you're examined, you know, and so it's hard to, you know, maybe hear some of these things, but I think you heard both of the gentlemen go out of their way to talk about, we have a program that's really very, very good, and we just want it to get better. And we want to be ready for whatever changes are out there, or whatever opportunities we have. So, we're really at a point that we can, you know, have more students or partner, and so we're at a good point, because we have people that are really sincerely interested in young people.
A little value add, you've talked about the summary. After I wrote the several pages, and you may have read the sort of analysis of state and national directions, I take The Economist, and they had a, literally, one-page, two-side, exactly what I had done. Fortunately, they came to the same conclusion, so that was good. That's why I ran it off, and I'm giving it to you. But it gives you a nice understanding of, and Economist has a British perspective, I don't know if you know that magazine, but it's kind of an interesting news piece, but it has kind of an international perspective about where the United States is around early childhood. And they're a little critical in their comments here, but it also gives you the sense of the direction and the fact that it is a state-by-state issue. So, I thought it was worth running off for you.
All right, anything else? Yes, ma'am.
We did have one question while you guys were talking about the finances on page... When we were talking about the fees, on page eight, the first slide on the top of that page shows Parkway's full-day, five-day-a-week program at $240 a week. And then, beneath that, the tuition rates for the part-time programs that were way at the top. So, is this $415 a month?
That's a month, and I'm sorry, that probably was not... It's inside the report, and it should have been on that slide. It's the way the districts in general, quote, "Full day is weekly," I mean, "full day is weekly."
Got it, okay.
"Part day is monthly."
So simple.
Why wouldn't I go full-time? $415 a week.
Right. Well, I think your audience here is a group of people that has not paid for early childhood education fees in a really long time.
Yeah. I apologize, I should have been on that slide.
I still feel the echoes.
All right, anything else?
I remember thinking, when my kids are done and I'm done paying for this, I'm going to have so much spare cash.
Yeah, good luck.
When you figure that one out.
Good luck with that one. They'll find a way to keep wanting more. So, anyway, thank you again.
We will look forward to, you know, the next step.
Yes, absolutely.
Interesting first step.
Yeah. And on any of the, if you pour into the data and you want to get some clarity on anything that's in there, feel free to get ahold of us anytime.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Have seat. Almost 10:30. We're going to keep going. 13.0 work session, none. 14.0 policy review. We've got several policies regarding tuberculosis tests. Can I have Lisa Harnicker come on down? Do we have any questions or anything? Anybody have anything for Lisa? Okay, then we're going to go for approval on May 8th. Do you want to approve tonight?
If there's no questions, then you're all comfortable.
All right, if there are no questions, then may I have a motion and a second to approve these policies?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, cut that off the May 8th agenda, thank you. Call for a special meeting on April 14th, April 15th, 2013. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for a special meeting on Monday, April 15th at 6:00 p.m. at the Administration Building for the purpose of holding the annual organizational meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 16.0 call for executive session on May 8th, 2013. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for an executive session on Wednesday, May 8th, 2013 at 6:30, and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district, and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys. 610.021.1. Boy, I should know how to clear a room.
Thank you for staying. Thank you for staying.
Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district with personnel information, personal information about the employees discussed or recorded. 610.021.3. Three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. 610.021.13.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Calanda.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Moverman?
Yes.
Dr. Surtino?
Yep.
Mrs. Felton?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries 7-0. 17.0 recess, 18.0 closed meeting, 19.0, we're done with our closed meeting. Ask for, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Mrs. Felton, can I, before you do that? You can see people have been kind of running around here during the meeting tonight.
We noticed.
Gee, is something going on, Dr. Marty?
Yeah, we did have some storm damage at Shenandoah Elementary, Shenandoah Valley. And in fact, some, we, right now, you know, it's dark and still storming out there, but some of the roof was peeled off, maybe three or four classrooms. So, we have called off school at Shenandoah for tomorrow, and the call actually already went out before 10 o'clock to parents, and we're making sure that kids will be safe and don't think it's a place for them to be tomorrow. We do have some power outages, also in Green Trails area, so you might not have... But other than that, the early assessment is that that was it. But no school at Shenandoah tomorrow. And we know that Paul Tanny said he was leaving because the media was on their way out to cover the damage.
Well, the media has covered it, and it's on kstk.com.
Oh, it is right now? Yeah.
That's how we learned about it a few minutes ago. While you were out running around.
Well, you had to guard curiosity, right? All right, so have I said everything I needed to say? Did we get our...
We have to adjourn.
We have to adjourn. Hold on a second. Yeah, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. It's time we will adjourn. We are finished with closed session. See everybody on either April 15th or May 8th. Thank you.
Want a meeting? Thank you, President. You have a meeting.